I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 6, 2016 City Council to be in order. Please call the roll. Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Peterson?
Here.
Alderman Condon? Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of McHenry's mission statement is as follows. The City of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services in a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. The first item on our agenda this evening is the public comment section. No one has signed in for that purpose, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Alderman Condon?
I would make the motion to approve the consent agenda A through O excluding item D.
Okay, A through O excluding D. Is there a second to that motion? Alderman Curry?
Second.
Discussion, Alderman Condon? No questions. Alderman Peterson?
No question.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Curry?
Just a couple of things. On the snow and ice issue that's on here, I guess the question is, if a driver had the permission of both property owners, what's the issue with them not leaving snow in the street, of course, but pushing it across, say, from one spot to another, as long as they had permission of both property owners?
That's a tough one, how they keep track of, you know, if they have permission or not. Of course, this is complaint-driven, so if somebody does call and complain about their neighbor doing this, then we'll address it. We're not going to go out looking for this, so I would say that we're going to take care of that issue.
Yeah, because, you know, in some areas, I think we're all aware, you know, some drivers is pretty hard for a plow driver to actually, you know, without going at some point, at least using part of the street to actually situate it.
Our main issue is leaving snow deposit on the road, and sometimes when the, I notice all the time, when plow drivers push the snow across the road, they're not pushing it past a curb or up on the right-of-way. So, I mean, that's to address that problem we have.
But normally, like, would just be a complaint that would cause that for us? Okay, all right. And then one other question on the sale of the vehicles. I just, you know, I looked at the mileage on these vehicles, and they average something like $9,000 miles a year. I'm just wondering, have we looked at, I guess, our total fleet? Do we really need as many vehicles as we have if we have, what is it, seven vehicles here that really don't have a lot of high mileage on them?
We've actually reduced Starfleet by five in the last two years. These are all, if you look at our, the ones besides the Crown Vic, those are all drug cases that we see vehicles from offenders. So, these aren't vehicles that we purchased. These are that we've used as much as we could, and then we're auctioning them off. And then the last one that has $140,000, that's one that's gone from being a vehicle on the road, then a specialty vehicle, then an SRO vehicle, and then, so we always, there's tiers of it.
I really wasn't looking at that one. I figured it was probably a police vehicle at some point or whatever. Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
I just had two questions. One, I guess, is for Ross. At the car, it's in a car show, but it says "show" in one of the letters, the car sales thing at the roller rink?
Yes, sir.
If they, is there going to be parking available for people who come in? They're not going to park on 31, are they?
No, no. In fact, I didn't have a site plan for that yet because they're still trying, the applicant was supposed to be here tonight, but they were still in the midst of trying to figure out the layout. But staff will make sure that there's adequate parking for tenants that are there for the car sales event, and then also, if the roller rink decides to be open one of those days, we will make sure that there's adequate parking for the roller rink as well.
Excellent. I was just concerned because I know how some of those events could go good, and then if you have, that's a busy stretch of highway there. I just hope that they wouldn't be allowed to park on the street.
They will also have parking attendants, letting people in and directing them to where to park, you know, so it's, and a security team as well.
Excellent. And then the other question was, are the times for the homecoming parade, is that correct?
It is correct. They wanted to try something new this year. They have typically left in an afternoon situation, 12:30, 1:30, from Oxford Pool, and then gone down to East Campus. This year, they wanted to stage it at East Campus and simply make that in neighborhood loop and come right back to the football field. So, they did want to try in the evening. They were hoping to get more of a community participation with having this early evening type event. We did discuss it internally, had some initial concerns with it, but with keeping them off of Green Street, they're not going to be on Green Street, they're crossing it, but not on Green Street.
So, will cars then be able to go on Green Street? Because that is a, it does back up there a little bit during rush hour.
We'll definitely be able to break that, just like we do for Soapbox Derby or any of those type of events.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Nothing else.
Alderman Santee?
No, I have no questions.
So, the motion is to approve items A through O excluding item D. Please call the roll. Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson? Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you. Then I'm looking for a motion on the ordinance amending municipal code chapter 21 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6 regulating curbside mailboxes. Looking for that motion. Alderman Curry?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Alderman Schaefer? Discussion, Alderman Curry?
I have no question.
Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
I have no questions.
Alderman Condon?
Couple of questions. I'm assuming that this was brought forward as a ways for protecting, I guess, our public works employees who are doing the snowfalling and the mailboxes getting knocked over. Is that correct?
Well, that's part of it. The main part were some of these huge structures that are getting, you know, put in the right-of-way for mailboxes, full brick structures, a lot of them, not a lot, but the majority of them that we had problems with, those Eleven Lakes, and they're built on top of our water main or sewer main.
Okay.
And that was the main purpose of this. And then we wanted to have something in writing on our replacement policy. Our mailboxes in town are getting older and older and rotten, and it's not so much the snowfall that's knocking them over, because of the lack of maintenance on those mailboxes.
I guess my concern is that, you know, I would applaud someone who wanted to have more of an ornamental mailbox. I guess it's the creativity in me. I like seeing, you know, some thought put into it and making it more than just a box, but I hadn't thought about the use of water main.
Yeah, public utilities.
Do they have to have any type of permit to build a structure that's other than a post-mailbox? In the past, has there?
We didn't have anything in place, and that's why we want to eliminate it, not even let them have that, because we don't want that in right-of-way. First of all, the safety, they're not breakaway. All our fire hydrants that we put in are breakaway hydrants. If they get hit by a car, they break away. These structures are so solid, I mean, they're going to do a lot of damage to a car and possibly injury also.
But are there examples of that? Has that happened?
I've had, I have no examples of that, but I'm concerned about it.
Okay. I guess I'd rather see it as a permit process than just eliminate it altogether where staff could have input and, you know, make sure wait or whatever the, you know, over the water main and would be allowed versus having just prohibited altogether, because I think it can be aesthetically pleasing to home. Just my thoughts.
Alderman Peterson?
No question.
Alderman Schaefer?
Wasn't, it was also discussed at committee level that that follows the USPS guidelines, correct? Because the Postal Service has a say in that as well.
I relate that, yes.
Exactly.
The standard that we adopted is the US Postal standard.
Thank you. Any further questions? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Motion carry. The next item is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the City of McHenry to file an objection to the application filed by ERAR Investments LLC of Crystal Lake, Illinois, for an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance of McHenry County, Illinois relating to the property located on the south side of Flanders Road approximately 1,150 feet east of the intersection of Flanders and Ringwood Roads in unincorporated McHenry County.
Thank you, Mayor. Council's being asked to consider a resolution objecting to zoning reclassification for a property. It's approximately three acres, 1,150 feet east of Ringwood Road and Flanders Road on the south side of Flanders Road. It's located in unincorporated McHenry County. I'll also state there was a revised ordinance placed that council's put in front of their place. No major changes than what was in the initial package, just some cleanup items.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Curry?
A move that we, let me see, pass a resolution objecting to zoning classification from A1 Agriculture and A1 C Agriculture with conditional use permit R3 multifamily residential and a variation of minimum lot footage of 159.91 feet within the R3 multifamily. The walls removal of existing conditional use permit for a property located approximately 1,150 feet east of Flanders Road and Ringwood Road on the south side of Flanders Road, a property located approximately 1,150 feet east of the intersection of Ringwood and Flanders Road.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Discussion, Alderman Curry?
Just that, you know, as we all read the packet and remember, this came, similar item came before us last year, and we certainly not in favor of it. At that time, it was a bit of a bigger issue then, and we're looking at the entire 22-acre parcel, but it appears with this one that they're going straight, well, they're going directly to county, trying to get a small parcel approved, and possibly that could lead to then the argument that, well, you know, adjacent property has the zones, and therefore you could then go for a larger parcel. I agree with the staff. In fact, we've talked about it at length earlier, and I commend staff for getting on the issue in a hurry and getting this before the county, which I believe it's Thursday, right?
The public hearing before zoning board is Thursday. This ordinance does not have to be filed until the actual subject gets considered by the county board.
But your plan of being at the meeting, is that correct? The zoning?
Where, I'm getting, if I can go, yes, I will go. But the, I was preliminary concerned with the objection having to be done, but after reading the procedures, the ordinance can be filed, but I will attend if I am able to.
Also, the county administrator and deputy county administrator, and also the director of planning and zoning for the county, all are aware of this objection, so they'll make sure to pass word on to the committee and the county board of the objection.
Well, thank you. And just for information, I plan on being at that meeting on Thursday, so I'm seeing if I can get a few other people, maybe that would like to be interested in it as well.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Glad?
The drainage for that property, where does it go? This is a head source, municipal code.
I am unsure. I don't know if this, I'm simply going off the zoning map, or as they call it, reclassification, so I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
I'm almost, well, not 100% positive, but I'm pretty sure that that's where it goes, and it should be another thing that possibly we should use as far as leverage, in the fact that we want to protect our natural resources and our wildlife. That's all I have.
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, when I went, when I read through this, and I agree with Alderman Curry in regards to, it's this one small piece they're looking at, and why would they, why would they look at doing this part, this partial piece of this whole subject property here? And I gotta believe that they're thinking, well, if we can get something going here, then maybe it'll make it a little bit easier for the county to pass this on other parcels that are adjacent or connected to this, to this piece. So, I'm pleased that we got this, and we'll be able to put this in front of, the county not necessarily for a Thursday meeting, but when they meet as a whole, the parents of the actual vote, others would come to their table. That's all I have.
Alderman Condon?
No question.
Alderman Peterson?
No question.
Any further discussion on this item? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Motion carry. The next item is a motion to authorize the mayor's execution of an engineering services agreement with HR Green Incorporated for a lump sum amount of $22,000 for engineering, design permitting, bidding, and surveying of McHenry Boat Launch at Miller Riverfront Park. Bill?
Thank you. There might be some record associated with this particular supplement. I'm not sure. It's been an outstanding item for about 30 years. We've talked about it for a long time. Actually, had some permitting and grants to initially put this park in, as you can see with the parking lot that's there. However, I think most everybody's aware of the history and the moratorium that the Army Corps implemented during that process, then ceasing our construction. We've stayed on them and tried to identify a launch for us to be able to put this, this public boat launch opportunity in, and through the cooperation of a couple neighboring agencies, have been able to do so, and we secure the rights as attached with that letter. So, what you have before you is a professional services agreement with HR Green, who's done a substantial amount of work in working with the Army Corps and us, and even the initial design was done with Smith Engineering, two designs, so there's a significant amount of history there. So, we hope that this is the last step to finally getting this boat launch in, a long-sought-after item for us as a community.
Thank you. Looking for a motion. Alderman Condon?
I would make the motion to approve the mayor's execution of the engine service agreement with HR Green for a lump sum amount of $22,000 for engineering, design permitting, bidding, and surveying of the McHenry Boat Launch at Miller Riverfront Park.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Discussion, Alderman Condon?
No, just as was stated, it's really exciting to see this come to fruition.
Thank you. Alderman Peterson?
No question, no.
Alderman Curry?
I have one.
Alderman Schaefer?
And this is, we budgeted this already for this year, I think, right?
We did. It was, this project was in our CIP.
And it's part?
Parts of the, or donations, yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Glad?
Nothing.
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, it's been a long time coming. I just, I look at the project, I don't know, you know, I mean, looking through this and trying to understand it, it just, I don't quite understand, and I know it's a small amount of money when you look at the total of what we spend on a daily and a monthly basis, the annual basis here, but it's really tough to try to figure out $20,000 for an engineering project for a boat launch. You know, I don't have too much background in it, you know. I've spoken to a couple of marine people, and for the engineering on something like this, I just don't see where it has to come in at a project this, at this high. And I guess the one question I'll ask staff is, is our city engineer involved in this project at all?
They have not been involved in this project.
That's so prior to him coming.
I will add that, you know, there is, it is a sensitive area. There are certainly some wetlands involved, especially just the permitting process through the Army Corps is, can be a tedious one, and one that we want to make sure that we have all of our I's dotted, every T's crossed. There is some design work that needs to be finalized. Basically, what we've been working off up to this point is, again, a drawing that doesn't have any significant amount of engineering plans associated with that. So, the Army Corps is going to expect something more than a drawing that says, all right, here's what it looks like when we go to put that in. So, that's why it's a little bit more than maybe you'd expect, just, it's more than just permitting and surveying. This takes us all the way through that bidding process. If, you know, if we had engineer on staff at a, you know, longer timeframe in regards to being able to work on this from day one, would this be something that would be up his alley in regards to being a project manager or project engineer?
Not in this scope of the project.
And can you explain a little bit more on that?
There's expertise in permitting through the Army Corps and design engineering, doing the CAD drawings and stuff. We're not going to be capable of doing that.
So, no expertise in Army Corps engineering?
Right.
And CAD drawing?
Correct. We're not capable of do that. We're going to still be doing our engineering, you know, house with that stuff yet.
I know the comments. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take the moment to say thanks to Bill and to everybody, John, and everyone on staff. This was a tedious process. It, there were so many hoops to jump through and so much red tape. It was unbelievable. I attended many of the meetings, and you take two steps forward and five steps back. Congressman Holgren even got involved and tried to expedite the process, but it was just one of those things that you had to just go through all of the motions that were in place. So, finally, we're going to have a boat launch. Yay! So, good job. The next item on the agenda is a motion to authorize the mayor's execution of grant of easement and assignment of lease agreements with Landmark Dividend LLC for cellular leases with New Singular Wireless LLC and/or T-Mobile for the property located at 4225 Soul Lane. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Council's being asked to consider two option agreements with Landmark Dividend LLC. The proposed agreements include the assignment of the existing leases and an easement acquisition for the New Singular Wireless or AT&amp;T and T-Mobile leases at 4225 Soul Lane. Both are for the assignment, the city's interest in the lease, in the lease and associated revenue, and easements extending through each respective term of the lease. And in exchange, the city would receive a lump sum payment in the amount of $524,000, $380,000 for the New Singular lease, and $144,000 for the T-Mobile lease, if those options are executed. Thank you.
Looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Curry?
I'll make the motion that the catch ordinance is authorizing the execution of both of the options pertaining T-Mobile and New Singular Wireless with Landmark Dividend and execution of grant of easement and assignment of lease with Landmark Dividend. If Landmark Dividend chooses to exercise either of both options after a prior expiration of 60-day option period with the condition of grant of easement and assignment of lease beyond substantial performance of both the attached options, with all conditions pertaining to enforcement maintenance time period dollar amount, and with conditions New Singular does not exercise their option of first right of refusal in T-Mobile authorized approval of Landmark Dividend to have their lease assigned.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Alderman Condon? Discussion, Alderman Curry?
Yeah, I looked at the, which was in the EBLAST, the analysis of future values. The, if I did the math right, when you, obviously, you get a lump sum, that's worth money, worth future money, and so, looking at that and looking at the difference, it's about $685,000 between the lease at full term and taking the cash now. I guess, and I understand that these leases could go away overnight, or, well, 60-day notice or something like that. So, I guess the only question I really have is that, what do you, what do you look at, and I really don't know the answer, what do you look at for, okay, you get a half a million dollars now, you're turning away maybe, you know, another $685,000. I mean, where's that breakpoint, or do you have a rule of thumb that you go by on that?
The biggest thing, if the numbers, like you said, they don't exactly align, but my biggest selling point of this was, is we get the money now, and we can use the money now. If both leases went to their respective terms, if they both were renewed for the four consecutive terms, if the rates stayed the same, we could lose money. However, this was all initiated by New Singular, by a call to me a year ago wanting a reduction in their rent. So, I look at getting the money now, being able to use it, and as a big value in this.
I'm just curious, and of course, there's no guarantees that these leases go to term, so, I mean, it's just, you know, you just don't know.
I think I would offer something too, if I could. The other issue is that not only did they initiate that call, but these brokers are out there recently, in the last two and a half years, where they're actually buying up, buying these leases. That didn't exist before. For whatever reason in the marketplace, it's happening today, and we don't know if it's going to happen tomorrow, and it's not happening consistently across the board with other municipalities that we're aware of. So, McHenry, I think, is the most active entity selling its leases. It could be good or bad, depending on how you like futures, but it's here, and the opportunity is here. That's really what started, I think.
Alderman Schaefer?
Is this that money that earmarked just for capital projects, or within capital just for water and sewer?
Yeah, this will go with the water, sewer, utility improvement projects.
So, does that have any effect on our increases that we've passed out? Would those be able to be stayed or reduced or anything?
I don't think so. I mean, when I'm looking at, you know, I'm looking at the CIP, there's $17 million of water, sewer, and utility maintenance projects in the five-year CIP. The reason that we implemented, not so much the rate changes, but the implementation of the base fees for water and sewer, as council may recall, is that we were, that those funds were mixed before, and we weren't able to maintain the operating costs and have sufficient funds to be able to do capital projects. It was a one or the other. So, when we did the evaluation, that's why we set up the base fees of $4 and $2 for water and sewer, is to begin to build up a capital fund that we could use to do water, sewer, and utility projects. Even at that, the $4 and $2, you know, I won't say that there's any increases that we've talked about specifically at this time. Those just were put in place, you know, this year, but certainly, it'll take an amount of time to build up the capital, the capital fund, or capital monies for water, sewer, and utility to be able to do big projects, larger products, projects. Now, this year, you know, we took a bite out of some water main replacements, some sanitary sewer main replacements, some larger capital items in water, sewer, and utility, but looking at the projects that we have listed, the base fees that we've implemented just aren't going to build up fast enough to keep up with. I mean, even the, while the money we're taking in, we're taking for this project would certainly help to be able to do projects over the next couple of years, it's still obviously not going to take care of $17 million for the projects.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Glad?
Nothing.
Alderman Santee?
I have no questions.
Alderman Condon? No questions. Alderman Peterson? Did I ask you anything?
No.
I don't think you did. But I think it's a good plan to do it this way, so I agree.
Alderman Peterson?
I think it's a good plan. I agree with the plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alden McGlaib?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 1617 budget capital improvements fund in the amount of $3,545.54 from the general fund balance, and approve the recommendation of FGM Architects to award the contract for dispatch center furniture purchases, number one, to NCPA, the NCPA contract with Frank Cooney Company for $64,817.41, and number two, the TCPN contract with Interior Investments for $3,228.11.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of McHenry is looking to make the final furniture purchase and lock in current pricing for the renovation and expansion of the McHenry Dispatch Center and Police Administrative Section. FGM assisted in this process and had provided quotes from two established companies that have been used in the past by the city of McHenry for this purchase. All furniture, if approved, will be obtained under cooperative purchasing agreements, assuring best pricing for all things.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item? Alden Schaefer?
I'll make the motion to approve the furniture purchase as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alden Curry?
I'll second.
Discussion, Alden Schaefer?
No questions.
Alden McGlaib?
This also includes the removal of the old furniture?
It does.
And what do they do with the old furniture?
Well, we have, we actually, I'm sorry, the old furniture that was, that was still somewhat usable was in our, in our city storage, we're holding on to that, see if it can be repurchased.
And, and unlikely, we'll probably have some public disposal of property, maybe an auction or something with all the, all the stuff that we took out. We did move it off-site when we cleared out for construction, moved that to an off-site storage facility.
Okay, so useful stuff.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah, we'll go through and see what the best of it is, if there's anything else that we need around here, and then we'll probably have a public disposal of property, it'll come back before you in the spring once it's structured.
And then say, gee, we should have given this and that to call away, huh?
You know that, or we're going to throw it garage door open and just have a yard sale. Thank you.
Sign off. Okay.
Thank you. Alden Santi?
I have no questions.
Alden Condon?
No questions.
Alden Peterson?
Make the yard sale part of Fiesta Days. We could, yeah. No, no question.
Alden Curry?
My questions were answered earlier by Chief Jones.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Alden Schaefer?
Yes.
Alden Curry?
Yes.
Alden Santi?
Yes.
Alden Condon?
Yes.
Alden Peterson?
Yes.
Alden McGlaib?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next item is the mayor's statement of reports. Just as a reminder, the city of McHenry, sponsored by our police department and our McHenry Township Fire Protection District, will once again this year be hosting a 9/11 ceremony at 9 o'clock on Sunday morning at Veterans Memorial Park. We have done this, we are the only community, I think, maybe one other that has done this every year since the events of 9/11. I, I urge you to come if it's all possible for you to be there, it's always a very, very nice ceremony, and both chiefs always have some very moving words for us. So if you can come, please do, 9 o'clock Sunday morning. And that's all I have. Bill, are there any others specially? Oh, uh, no, nothing else then?
No, that's not the big one, other than, other than consents are continuing in the park through, through the end of September.
Thanks to the, Farmers Market. Farmers Market, yeah. Any committee reports this evening? Alden Schaefer?
We do have a public works committee meeting on the 19th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, any staff reports tonight?
Just two things I wanted to mention quickly, just, it was approved as part of the consent agenda, but I just wanted to highlight the change order as part of the McHenry Recreation Center construction, that that was a credit for $16,600.